Welcome, everyone. I would like to call this Bay County Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, November 18, 2025, at 4:00 PM to order. Madam Clerk, may we have your call, please?
Niemec.
Here.
Bigick.
Here.
Beeson.
Here.
Rupp.
Here.
Docket.
Here.
Creed.
Here.
Benajak.
Here. Thank you. Please rise for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we ask that you bless this session of the Board of Commissioners this day and that you lead and guide this board in the decisions made so that all citizens in this community will benefit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any motion on the minutes of 10:21? So move.
Support.
Is there any discussion, corrections? See not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda approval.
Move the agenda. Support.
Any discussion? See not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, this is for public input, citizen input. Is anyone wishing to address this commission?
Good afternoon, Bay County. Standing here today in order to express my deep, deep opinions on the use of Flock security cameras. I would request that you vote no on any Flock security product, and I would like to explain why. But if you take anything away from this, please remember the following. In order of severity, the fact that a large centralized data set being breached is a matter of when and not if. Flock security has provided inconsistent messaging on whether or not they use AI and facial recognition in their systems. Flock security has a history of its data being misused and abused illegally to illegally track or stalk people, oftentimes on the basis of one or more protected classes. Flock security cameras are part of a national network. This means that they can be pressured by the government and any government that they do business with to provide data unscrupulously, as we've all seen they've done with federal agencies in the U.S. Flock security has been shown repeatedly to not have the public's best interest in mind and is only motivated by data collection and the profit inherent therein. Now, you might say these are serious accusations being alleged towards Flock security, but please let me explain. I'm going to go through each of these items and propose mitigations, or at least bring it in line to where I would be comfortable with this system. Let's start with the inherent insecurity of large data sets. I'm an software engineer in the industry with a focus on application infrastructure, like what I'm talking about here. For those of you unfamiliar with application infrastructure, those contain things like databases, virtual servers, network routing, and more. I can personally speak to the insecurity of large centralized data sets just simply because of the fact that no computer system in this world is completely secure. And any cybersecurity personnel who's been in the industry and knows what they're talking about would agree with that. As I've said before, it's not a matter of when or if, but when. Without going into the math behind the chances of a system being cracked, it generally boils down to two things. While there are more, these two are the most important. First is how difficult is that data access? And the second being how valuable that data is. An article recently published by The Bleeping Computer, a well-known cybersecurity blog on bad actors using company service desks to infiltrate large corporate networks. The article cites four different data breaches just in this year alone. These types of attacks are commonplace, and again, for emphasis, require virtually no technical skills whatsoever to execute. And this assumes that the technical side of their networks are perfect. Similar systems used to determine age verification in the U.K. have already been compromised within less than a year of implementation. A popular messaging app disclosed a breach this year where an age verification processor was compromised, leaking over 700,000 government IDs, names, and contact information. The U.K.-based news source Independent goes into more details, but to surmise, large pools of even potentially dangerous information are a time bomb waiting to happen. Just imagine how quickly people will want to go after people's typical day-to-day routines. Recently, you may have heard about the push to investigate Flock security for a failure to enforce multi-factor authentication. For those not aware, it's simply the process of requiring something you have and something you know in order to ensure you are who you say you are. So, for example, requiring a password, which is something you know, and a code from your phone, which is something you have. This is widely considered to be a requirement for password-based authentication in this day and age, as not having it is marginally better than having no password at all. You might ask, how can this be mitigated? Flock could mitigate this by setting up standalone data store within Bay County, and that's only accessible within Bay County. I'm not talking about region locking. I'm talking about you need to be in this building to access it, and there's no other physical way to access it. This would be similar to how, say, some government agencies air-gap their systems where you need to be in that physical system or in that physical building to access them. While this doesn't completely mitigate the risk, it does disconnect the information from a wider network and prevent one national-level data breach from compromising the data of your Bay County residents as well. In addition, Flock security should be using two-way SSL, sometimes also known as mutual certificate authentication, which is typically far superior to any password-based authentication. This is typically what is used to secure government systems at the federal level and significantly less susceptible to things such as password sharing or credential theft, which will come up again later on. This is especially true when paired with hardware security keys, oftentimes in the form of PIV cards, which is what our federal systems use. Moving on to my next topic, facial recognition is an unaddressed threat. If you ask a Flock representative directly, they will boldly tell you that their cameras do not use facial recognition. Despite this, you can look at other sources of information on the company and clearly see that they are marketing this functionality outside of the public view. The site ecrloss.com, which is produced by a consumer goods manufacturing group aimed at preventing shrinkage. With a little actual information here, you can see that they are touting Flock security in their top 30 list for tools to prevent retail shrinkage, and with the use of, you guessed it, facial recognition, and this is proudly mentioned. The fact of the matter is, these types of abuses already exist for you and your constituents. Companies are already abusing facial recognition to discriminate and manipulate based on their own motives. Take an example here where there was a piece on Kroger by The Daily Dot explaining how Kroger uses facial recognition to artificially adjust prices based on what they know about you and your history within their stores. Flock is already pushing this boundary with the use of its license plate readers. Take another article published by the ACLU, which goes into details on how Flock is using AI to profile people. The people being profiled are usually people of color in order to attempt and predict what they term as suspicious driving. To put this bluntly, Flock security amounts to 24/7 surveillance, and these features can be turned on or off by individual police departments. Your constituents have no say in how this tech is used. Let's take a moment and give Flock security the benefit of the doubt. Let's assume they do not use facial recognition in their surveillance cameras despite the evidence that they likely do. How can you or your constituents be assured that this isn't added and enabled without the review of additional features? Since these features are added and usually without any contract renegotiation, we would then be at the mercy of Flock as to how our data is used and processed. One must also consider the fact that just because the cameras do not use facial recognition, downstream systems might. Once a photo is taken, it can be stored and accessed later. Facial recognition software does not require live footage for it to be effective. It would be very easy to make the case that the cameras are not utilizing facial recognition, but third-party data processors are. How can this be mitigated? Any contract with Flock security must contain explicit language prohibiting the use of facial recognition for any reason. This must also include third-party processors or anyone who may contract with or otherwise. Simply put, there must be a blanket ban on facial recognition for any purpose. Next, I would like to address the misuse and abuse we've already seen in other municipalities in regards to Flock security data. The claims for these cameras are that data is only accessible to the contract holders. While this is not necessarily true, the regulation behind what the contract holder can do with or how they can use that data is completely unregulated. As reported both by the Dallas Morning News and the Electronic Frontier Foundation in May 2025, Johnson County, Texas sheriff deputies used Flock's network to track a woman suspected of self-managing abortion. Regardless of how you feel about abortions, initiating an interstate search without a warrant is not something this commission should support. They conducted searches across 83,000 Flock cameras nationwide with the explicit reason "had an abortion search for female," and that is a direct quote. The search accessed cameras across multiple states, including those where abortion is legal.
Mr. Chair, Speaker's time has expired.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sir, would you please state your name and the registered address?
My name is Gereth Dietrich. I can spell that for you if you'd like.
Sure. Could you please spell it?
G-E-R-E-T-H.
Thank you.
And my last name is D-I-T-T-R-I-C-K.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to speak more on this if needed.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name's Katie Ball. Did you name my address? Did you say that address too? No? Okay. I'm sorry, what was that?
We know you.
Okay. Just Katie Ball from McLaren Prevention Services, and I just wanted to stand up here and share with you guys that the State Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy is going to be hosting a webinar on December 17, and it's all about marijuana and effects on the environment, and it's for governing officials to help them, while governing the marijuana industry. So I just wanted to stand up and make sure everybody was aware of that, because it's a great resource. It's a free webinar for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Going once, going twice, public input is closed at this time. Petitions and communications. We have two presentations. We have one, Michigan Association of Counties update by Executive Director Steve Curry. Steve?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Steve Curry. I'm the Executive Director of MAC. One of my roles at MAC is to try to get out to as many county commission meetings as I can each year. I used to have to try to do 40, so I'd get half every two years. Now with four-year terms, I get to knock it down to 20, so that makes everyone's job a little easier, hopefully yours as well. I do have a presentation to go through today. Feel free to interrupt me with any questions, or if you'd prefer to wait till the end, I'm fine with that as well. So this just gives you an overview of MAC. We're known for three primary areas: advocacy, education, and services. On the advocacy side, we cooperate or partner with NACO, the National Association of Counties, on federal issues. Here in the state of Michigan, hopefully, we're arming you with information, because we definitely look at the advocacy in-state as a team effort. We're trying to be your voice in Lansing and equipping you to be your voice here in your local districts. Education, we provide a wide variety of educational tools throughout the year, a couple conferences. I'll talk about those in a second, various webinars. We also put on the New County Commissioner's School in cooperation with MSU Extension every -- well, now it'll be every four years, and we are working with a midterm educational opportunity with them as well. Finally, services, I'll talk about that on another slide. This is an overview of our board. There are 16 members of our board that are elected typically at our annual conference. We just had an election at our conference about a month ago. We typically meet about four times a year, at least four times a year at each of our conferences, and two times outside of that. You can see the full board at the website there if you scan that QR code. This is the current MAC leadership. Antoinette Wallace is the MAC president. She's from Macomb County. Brian Colke is the first vice president from Noguago County. William Miller is the second vice president from Oakland County, and Melissa Dobbs is the immediate past president from Wayne County. And of course, you have a former board member sitting in the room here with Vaughn Begget. I talked about our events. We just finished up our conference about a month ago up at Grand Traverse Resort. I know a few of you were there, so thank you for attending that. Our next conference will be our legislative conference, which is April 27 through 29. That conference is always in Lansing. You can always count on that to be in the spring in Lansing. And then we're back up for our annual conference in September of 2026, back up at Grand Traverse Resort. Getting into some of our legislative priorities, as we finish up this legislative session, both this year and next, these are some of the issues we're going to be focusing on. Revenue sharing is always going to be the top of our list, and I'll talk about some bills that have to do with our revenue-sharing trust fund and how we ended up in the budget this fiscal year. Reforming Earn Sick Time Act was something we worked on early this year, one of the few bills that was -- package of bills that was enacted so far this year. Compensating local governments for the veterans' property tax exemption, this is something we've been talking about for a while. We are by no means trying to impact veterans or the property tax exemption they are getting now, but we would like the state to reimburse us for that exemption. That's something that was voted on at the state level and is costing local governments about $75 million statewide, so we feel the state should reimburse us for that. Adopting a permanent solution for Michigan courts, I'll talk about that more in detail, and also the road funding infrastructures, I'll talk a little bit more about. A little bit on the political shifts here in Lansing. Republicans now control the House 58-52. As you folks are well aware, there's a vacant seat in the Senate that is going to be filled in the coming months of early 2026. Some of the bigger changes, the House did eliminate the Local Government Committee. What does that mean for us? It just means our bills get spread out to more committees. Our staff does more education to legislators on those local government bills and how they impact your jobs. And that's a little dated now, because there were some bills signed today, but there have been 14 acts in 2025, which is lower than the couple hundred that they usually have at this point. So this is an overview of the state budget timeline. I'm not going to spend too much time in it. Do know that we did actually have state government and federal government shutdown at the same time on October 1. No one really knew about it. It was only for a few hours before the state actually passed a short-term budget to get us through to when the final budget was actually signed on October 8. So how did counties do in the budget? Well, we did pretty well. We avoided -- there was potentially a 12% cut to county revenue sharing. We were able to avoid that and maintain revenue sharing from your past fiscal year, so your $2025 will be your $2026. There are also a couple new funds that were created for counties that counties are able to take advantage of. The Public Safety Fund, Crime Reduction Fund, that's about $14 million that goes to counties. It does provide flexible spending for the counties for public safety purposes. We did send out an update last Friday that kind of shows the breakdown of each county's estimate, so you can refer back to our legislative update last week if you'd like to see specifically how much Bay County will be receiving. And then they also created the Public Safety Constituency Grants. This was $17 million for the 15 high-crime counties across the state, and you can see those listed there. That's based on per capita crime rates. So road funding, that was obviously a huge discussion that went on in Lansing while the budget discussion was going on. The new road funding plan will create about $1.5 billion to $1.85 billion each year. It is heavily focused to be distributed over local roads, and I'll talk more about that in a second. One of the biggest changes was the elimination of sales tax on gasoline at the pumps. And now all the taxes you pay at the pump go towards roads. It was replaced with a net-neutral gasoline tax. So all the gas tax now goes towards roads, and I'll talk about distribution on that. There also was an additional 24% marijuana excise tax. That ironically created $420 million. I don't know how they did the math so accurately on that, but it did create that much money. That, incidentally, will have a hearing, a court hearing, next week. The judge could rule that that money goes away. They could rule that the intent of the ballot initiative was not for them to be adjusted by the legislature, that it had to be done by ballot initiative. So we'll see on that. That could provide -- could eliminate the $420 million. The judge could say it's fine. There'll probably be appeals, so we're still not quite sure what'll happen with that and when that will be funneled towards roads. And then finally, there was a change in the corporate income tax structure that created some significant dollars as well. So where does that money go? So first and foremost, it goes to the Michigan Transportation Fund. That's Public Act PA 51, the normal distribution funds for gas tax dollars, those sort of things. So that's about $460 million will run through that fund. They also created a Neighborhood Road Fund. Significant of those dollars -- significant amount of those dollars does go towards local roads. It can be used on township roads without a county match, so the county can use that as an option if it so chooses. So what does that mean when it's all said and done? It's about a 35.5% increase for county road agencies. So some significant dollars coming to county roads and bridges to make sure we get our infrastructure up to where it needs to be. So another area I wanted to touch on is court funding. So back in 2017, the legislature created the Trial Court Funding Commission, which came out with five recommendations at the time on how courts should be funded, how the fees should be distributed, should they be state employees. So the legislature started to work on legislation to enact some of those -- not enact, but introduce some of those bills that would reflect those changes. COVID hits, legislature changes, kind of falls apart. A few years ago, they passed a bill that would kind of rekindle that discussion again. Those work groups came out with their recommendations last week and did a joint hearing in the legislature to present some of those findings, about 110-page report. We released it last week. So now the process will be the legislature will take that and kind of put bills together based on whether they like those recommendations or not. At this point, I would say we're lukewarm at best to those recommendations. We have some significant funding concerns with those recommendations. It's eliminating some of the fees and some of the programs that are being funded through those fees, and takes away some of the local control at the local level and some of the decision-making. But again, we'll see where legislations introduced to take our final position on that, and we'll let you know once that legislation is introduced. Just for your edification, there's those fees due sunset at the end of 2026, so those court fees and how they can be charged do expire at the end of 2026. So we will most likely be looking to extend that sunset once again, because I do not feel like they'll be able to get those legislation passed by the end of 2026. Revenue-sharing trust fund. So these are the bill numbers that do reflect the revenue-sharing trust fund that we've been working on for a few years now. Last year, we were able to pass it out of the House 106 to 4. Unfortunately, we could not get any movement on the Senate out of it. Now that things are starting to get passed again in this legislature, we are hopeful to get it passed again. With such broad bipartisan support last year, we do feel like we can get some movement on these bills again. Basically, what the bills do, they do earmark a portion of the state sales tax for county revenue sharing, make it much more difficult for the legislature to appropriate those funds away for different priorities. Veteran service grants. So as many of you know, the department miscalculated on those veteran service grants earlier this year, gave away more money than they had. Math's hard sometimes, I guess. So what this bill would do would backfill that shortfall. So Rep. Rogers, who's a former county commissioner from Kama-Zoo County, introduced the bill. It would make up that shortfall, so those veteran service -- county veteran service groups would get that money that they were promised originally. With the whole budget process and it taking that long, we haven't seen movement on it, but it does have bipartisan cosponsorship on that bill, so we're hopeful to see that move before the end of the year as well. Everything I spoke about today kind of is discussed at our policy committees. You can see when those policy committees -- what those policy committees are. They typically meet in the fall through the spring. You do not have to participate in person if you'd like to attend. You can participate online. If you'd like to be on one of those committees, please feel free to fill out an application online, and we can get you appointed to those committees. There's about 20 to 25 county commissioners on those committees. Counties United PAC is a PAC that we have. It's a smaller PAC. It primarily supports those 26 former county commissioners that are in the legislature. If you'd like to donate, you can donate at the website there. And then these are some of the services we provide through our organization that helps support MAC. We have a workers' compensation fund we administer that's been around for many years. CoPro Plus is a cooperative purchasing program. We have some insurance programs as well, and if you'd like more information on that, please feel free to reach out to me. And then finally, our communication tools. So we have all the social media. Like I mentioned earlier, we do the legislative update every week. Hopefully, you're all getting that. We've gone to a printed newsletter a few years ago that comes out every other month. We do a podcast on Mondays that's kind of fun to listen to sometimes, and hopefully, if you're reaching out to our staff, we're being very responsive to any questions you guys may have. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the commissioners? Yes.
You spoke really fast, but very clear, so. Good job.
Thanks. It's not my first rodeo.
Steve, I got one question. Is MAC considering a bid for the mental health PIPHs?
Yeah, so you're referring to the RFP that was put out by MDHHS. Yes, we did put in a bid. We did submit a bid in response to that. The reason being is, without knowing, truly knowing where the direction of the department was going to go or their intent, we wanted to have an option out there that would preserve local control, so we did submit a bid in response to that. At this point, we have no idea what the department's going to do. There's, of course, still lawsuits still hanging out there. We don't know what the judge's final decision is going to be on one component of that. The department still could pull back that RFP, but we'll wait and see at this point.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's a $4 billion entity, yeah. So, thank you. Anyone else?
Move to receive the presentation.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it.
Number two, Resolution Number 2025-204, honoring the life and service of Major General Gary Leonard Icorn.
Move that resolution. Ask the clerk to read the resolution.
Okay. Support. All in favor?
Gary Leonard Icorn was born on Christmas Day in 1934 to Thelma and Leonard Icorn of Bay City, Michigan, and attended TL Handy High School, graduating in 1952. Gary enlisted in the United States Air Force in 1956, later attending the United States Air Force Aviation Cadet Program, where he earned his pilot wings and was commissioned as a second lieutenant in 1959. He continued his education at Minnesota State University and graduated in 1977 with a degree in military science. And throughout his distinguished military career, Gary rose through the ranks of the Air Force, retiring in 1994 with the rank of Major General after more than 38 years of continuous active and reserve service. And his exceptional service was recognized with numerous awards, including the United States Air Force Distinguished Service Medal, and in 1968, transferred to the Air Force Reserve flying C-119s and C-130s, and began flying for Northwest Airlines as an instructor-pilot in Boeing 707s. And he moved his family to Burnsville, Minnesota, where Northwest Airlines was based, and he flew Boeing 727s, 707s, 747s, and DC-10s for Northwest until 1977, when he retired and moved to Stewart, Florida. And his love for flying never abated, and he built and flew three homemade aircrafts. And Gary Leonard Icorn passed away on September 1, 2025, in Stewart, Florida, and is survived by his beloved wife of 66 years, Roma Joyce Icorn. His two sons, CW5 Leonard Icorn, USA retired, and wife Annette of Daathing, Alabama, and LTC Lawrence Icorn, USAF, retired, and wife Shannon of Las Vegas, Nevada. His daughter Lisa in Guanti, and husband Paul of Groton, Connecticut. His brothers, Major Adrian Icorn of Frankenmuth, Michigan, and Alan Icorn of Bay City, Michigan, and his five grandchildren. Therefore, be it resolved that the Bay County Board of Commissioners honors the memory of Major General Gary Lawrence Icorn, who was born and raised in Bay City, Michigan, and proudly served his country for 38 years in the United States Air Force, rising to the rank of Major General. Following his distinguished military career, he continues to share his passion for aviation as an instructor-pilot with Northwest Airlines. The board extends its deepest gratitude for his dedicated service to the United States
I asked Gary -- not Gary. Larry. His son to step forward, Larry. I noticed all the children have L names. We have Larry, and we have Leonard, and Lisa. I also want to mention that L. Icorn, who was sort of the instigator of this award and unfortunately passed away last Friday, that's Gary's brother from Bay City, and he was instrumental in getting this taken care of. So I'll let retired Lieutenant Colonel Icorn speak, and he also served the city of Seattle in public service also. Say a few words.
Thank you, Vaughn, and thank you for this recognition of my dad and his service. Of course, he was born, raised here in Bay City, served, and worked at the faux shit garden, did all kinds of wonderful things. Remember that he worked at a local dairy and ice cream parlor, and for about 40 years after that, he wouldn't eat ice cream. I always wondered why. But yeah, Dad had a wonderful career and life, and just recently passed. Obviously, we miss him very much, and this is a great way to kind of celebrate his life and put it into public record. As Vaughn mentioned, I served as well. My brother did also, and numerous folks within our family. From my grandfather, World War I. My uncle was -- flew V-17s in World War II. My uncle was, flew B-17s in World War II. Dad flew B-52s during the Cuban Missile Crisis. And both my brother and I were deeply involved in all our recent global war on terrorists operations. So again, very full line of public service. And I've been a public servant for 33 years, retired from the city of Seattle.
Okay, B. We carry it. Well said. Thank you. Public hearing regards to proposed 2026 Bay County Budget.
Move to go out of regular order of business to conduct a public hearing following public hearing. Just that part.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries. Now, this is the time for public input on the proposed 2026 budget. Anyone wishing to have any questions? Going once? Going twice? Public input is closed for the 2026 budget.
Motion to go back into regular order of business?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries. Okay, C. Resolution Number 2025-205, 2026 Bay County Budget. I move Resolution Number 2025-205, 2026 Bay County Budget. I mean, I have support.
Support.
Motion has been supported. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion to amend Resolution 2025-205, 2026 Bay County Budget, Paragraph 15 of the General Appropriation Budget Act Resolution to add the following language to the end of the second sentence. Except for wage adjustments made pursuant to reclassification through the budget process, which right is expressly reserved to the Board of Commissioners. B, as amended, the sentence shall read as follows. This method shall be used for all future wage increases except for wage adjustments made pursuant to reclassification through the budget process, which right is expressly reserved to the Board of Commissioners. Is there support for this amendment? Hearing support. The amendment to Paragraph 15 is moved.
Aye.
Yes. I need a motion, support.
So he made a motion, we have support.
Support. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Now I return to the main motion.
Support.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One of my daughters is here.
Yes.
Motion is to amend, is to accept the budget as amended, correct?
Yes.
Support.
Support. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, see none, motion carries. Before we move on, I would like to comment on the budget. On October 1st, the Bay County Board of Commissioners received the proposed 2026 budget from Executive Jim Barsha on his administration. As submitted, the executive budget projected a $4.183 million use of general fund balance. Following a comprehensive line-by-line review conducted by the Board of Commissioners, staff in partnership with the Finance Department and the Personnel Department, the Board is releasing an updated project budget projection reflecting a significantly reduced deficit This improvement represents $2,307,846 in cost savings identified through responsible restructuring of fiscal review. Importantly, none of the revisions impact personnel. No layoffs were included in any recommended adjustments. The majority of the cost savings were achieved through four key areas. First, $850,000 was realized through a transfer from the Viva Retiree Health Trust. Independent orders have repeatedly flagged the Viva Fund as overfunded and a liability, and the Board acted responsibly by transferring only approximately half of the maximum allowable amount while ensuring the long-term health of the fund continues to be closely monitored. Second, $800,000 in savings came from corrected overbudgeting for claims, settlements, and judgments. During review, it became clear that certain anticipated expenses were advertently budgeted in both '25 and '26, even though they only need to be included in 2025. Correcting the right size, those line items resulted in substantial and appropriate savings. Third, $400,000 was achieved by adjusting the county's contribution to retiree health insurance. The Board realigned contributions to match actual actuarial need while maintaining all promised benefits to retirees. Finally, the Board of Commissioners identified and corrected several understated revenue projections, including those within the Public Guarding Program, CRA, Limited Arms Association. Updating these figures can reflect accurate expected revenue generates an additional $257,846 for the four-year 2026 budget. In addition to responsible cost reductions, the Board of Commissioners is making strategic investments to strengthen public safety and modernizing county operations. The four-year 2026 budget includes a historic $100,000 investment in the Marine Patrol, ensuring continued safety for boaters, anglers, and recreation users of the Bay County waterways, amid ongoing uncertainty surrounding federal grant funding, the following, the removal of the Essexville Ghost Guard Station. This investment reflects the Board's commitment to maintaining a strong and viable public safety presence on the water. The Board is also committed to improving efficiency and reducing administrative burdens on county staff. As part of the 2026 budget, the county is investing in automated payroll software, eliminating the need for employees to complete paper time cards and ensuring that Personnel Department staff will no longer be required to work holidays to process payrolls so their coworkers receive their checks on time. This modernization is an investment in both staff well-being and long-term operational efficiency. The Board of Commissioners extends its sincere appreciation to many individuals who contributed to the last year's budget process. We especially thank Executive Jim Barsha for his collaborative leadership and strong partnership in government. We also offer our gratitude to Finance Officer Scott Tripkowsky, Assistant Finance Officer Kim Prentice, Staff Accountant Julie LaPrayer, Personnel Director Tiffany Jerry, and Corporate Counselor Amber Davis Johnson for their expertise, diligence, and countless hours of work. We further recognize and thank all department directors and Bay County employees for their professionalism, cooperation, and dedication to responsible stewardship of public resources. The Board looks forward to continued collaboration with as many implemented as we implemented four-year 2026 budget, working together to deliver the high-quality services our taxpayers expect and deserve, and to assure Bay County remains the best place in Michigan to live, work, and raise a family.
Let me do a roll call vote. Nemic?
This is to approve the budget.
Yes. Bigick?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Rep?
Yes.
Docket?
Yes.
Crete?
Yes.
Benajak?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, next, there's our appointments. Application for appointment to the Bay County Building Authority. We have two six-year terms expiring 11/30 to 31. Any motion?
Motion to receive the applications and to make the appointments following the vote.
Support. All in favor?
Voting for two, correct?
Yes.
Bigick?
I will vote for Scott Doian and Dennis Benajak.
Beeson?
I'll vote for Scott.
What's that? Yeah, Dennis Benajak.
Scott Doian?
Yeah.
Dennis, okay. Rep?
Scott Doian and Dennis Benajak.
Docket?
Chad Lutz and Travis Brady.
Sorry.
Chad Lutz and Travis Brady. Top two.
Chad Lutz and Scott Doian.
Nemic?
Mr. Benajak and Mr. Doian.
You can leave it there.
Nemic, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. What did you say, Kathy?
And Mr. Doian and Mr. Benajak.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And Benajak?
Scott Doian and Dennis Benajak.
Okay.
One more.
One more.
You need one more.
Five for Dennis.
Doesn't really matter.
Five for Dennis.
That's five.
Okay.
Oh, so close.
We have two for Lutz, one for Brady, six for Doian, and five for Benajak.
Motion to make the appointments of Scott Doian and Dennis Benajak to the Building Authority. Support.
Any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries. Okay, the city of Bay City. Application for obsolete property rehabilitation exemption district and certificate for Carline Diversified Industries LLC, 906th Street, Bay City, Michigan. Move to receive?
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries. Number two, application for obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for DS Denim Properties LLC, 1125 South Water Street, Bay City, Michigan. Move to receive?
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries. And F, Aronet County Planning Commission Notice of Intent to Update Master Plan, Aronet County, Michigan. Move to receive?
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries. Thank you. Reports and resolutions of the committees, committee of the whole. Commissioner Crete.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number one, Resolution 2025-206, recognizing November as a Veterans Month in Bay County.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item two, Resolution 2025-207, Fiscal Year HSGP Grant for LED Signs for Sheriff's Office. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item three, Resolution 2025-208, Professional Liability Insurance Agreement with Alta Pro Lawyers Risk Purchasing Group. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item number four, Resolution 2025-209, CASA Contract, 2025-2026. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item number five, Resolution 2025-210, Childcare Fund Annual Plan and Budget, 2025-2026. I move this resolution.
Support.
A motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Resolution Number 2025-211, YAP Contract for 2025 to 2026. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item seven, Resolution 2025-212, 2026 Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item number eight, Resolution 2025-213, Certified Lactation Consultant Agreement, 2026. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item number nine, Resolution 2025-214, Eagle Grant, 2026. This is a corrected resolution to reflect the Eagle Grant, 2026, in place of the Eagle Grant, 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item number 10, Resolution 2025-215, Medical Examiner RFQ, 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item number 11, Resolution 2025-216, My Community Dental Centers Agreement Renewal, 2025-2026. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item number 12, Resolution 2025-217, M.D.R. Welfare Grant, 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item 13, Resolution 2025-218, MSU Veterinary Community Medicine Program Agreement. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item number 14, Resolution 2025-219, Purchase of Service Agreement, 2025-2026. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item number 15, Resolution 2025-220, Williams Township, Cock-Holland Township, and Hampton Township Site Agreements, 2026. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item number 16, Resolution 2025-221, Lease Agreement for Snack Shop for the 2026 through 2028 Seasons. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item 17, Resolution Number 2025-222, 2026 Medicare Advantage Contract Renewal. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Number 18, Resolution Number 2025, 2025-223, Contract with Covenant Occupational Health, 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item number 19, Resolution 2025-224, Delta Dental Contract, 2026. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item number 20, Resolution Number 2025-225, Employees Healthcare Contribution Rates, 2026. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item number 21, Resolution 2025-226, Legal Shield and Ideal Shield Contract. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Item number 22, Resolution 2025-227, Payables. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters, there any discussion? Seeing on all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, I'm motion carries.
Lastly, item number 23, Resolution 2025-228, MMR- Lastly, item number twenty-three, Resolution 2025-228, MMRA Renewal, 2026. I move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters during discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, no motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Crete. The committee of the whole was canceled and already been referred to the full board. So Commissioner Begic.
We have Resolution number 2025-229, Reports of the County Executive, October 2025. Move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters during discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Seeing none, opposed?
We have Resolution number 2025-230, Formal Acceptance of Pad and Bench Donation to Civic Arena from Bangor DDA. Move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters during discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, no motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-231, Transfer of the Administrative Authority of the Bay County Juvenile Home from the Bay County Executive to the Bay County Courts effective upon licensure as a court-operated juvenile facility. Move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters during discussion. Yes.
It's just sort of interesting reading through how this has transitioned with us becoming a county executive, former government, and then the court said you had control, and then started switching it.
Yes, sir. It goes back to the first county executive, Gary Majewski. And I think, as the board knows, maybe the public does, he was licensed basically as a childcare center as opposed to a juvenile detention facility. And why? I wasn't around during that time, but it was a mistake because, you know, our staff out there can't restrain or even touch one of the juveniles. So it makes it very difficult. Even when they're attacked, they can't defend themselves. So as a juvenile detention facility, it'll be safer for the staff, safer for the, you know, the young people who are housed there. And also, I appreciate the courts being willing to take it over that responsibility. And then also, there'll be a lot of change because I'm not sure if she's announced retirement yet, but we may have a vacancy with Julie Reynolds possibly notifying us of her, you know, pen in retirement. So be a lot of change out there, but I'm confident we'll go forward and it'll be a better system for the juveniles who are detained there.
Thank you.
Another discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, no motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-232, Transfer of Partial Opioid Settlement Funds to Bay Community Foundation, and Creation of Opioid Remediation Endowment Fund, and then Designation of Partial Opioid Settlement Funds for Community Corrections Residential Treatment Placement. I'll move this resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters. Is there any discussion on this?
I see we have some of our providers of services here, and I know we've been working on this for a while to get it to the right spot, and I think we've got it in the right spot now. It involves a lot of paperwork and a lot of follow-up and make sure that money's being spent wisely. So I think that it'll be better spent here and hopefully get distributed. And also, I just heard that Purdue Pharma settles, so there'll be more money coming into the funds for us to administer and have help from the foundation then, too.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Barsch?
Yes, I'll most appropriate, Mr. Chairman, but we do have Shawna Walraven here, who is the CEO of the Bay Area Community Foundation that would handle the disbursement of the opioid settlement funding. And I do want to say, Shawna, you and Amber were involved in also compiling all the data on our litigation that we initiated in 2017 on recovering money for the impact that the opioid and drug addiction problem has caused us in Bay County. So we get a little piece of that in terms of reimbursement, but most importantly, we wanted to make an impact in terms of preventing addiction and treating addiction. And so we appreciate your stepping forward. I'm wondering, Mr. Chairman, if Shawna Walraven wanted to say anything.
Just want to say thank you. This is definitely in the wheelhouse of what the community foundation does, is getting those funds out, making the most impact in the community, and measuring the results. So I'm excited for this opportunity and hope to make a difference in getting to learn all about the providers who are providing that treatment and the services available in the community. So yeah, kind of a full circle moment from when we first started the lawsuit to now being able to help in the community. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Shawna.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just want to say that I really think that the community foundation is the best fit for this, and I think they'll do a great job in administering this. And so I think we're doing the right thing by moving it there.
Yes, and I agree with that, too. We want to sit there and stretch it out as far as we can, over 15 years as possible. So, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, no motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-233, Approval of Second Amendment to the Monitor Township Downtown Development Authority Revenue Sharing Agreement. Move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters during discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, no motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-234, Bay County 911 Staffing Model for 2026 Budget. Move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters during discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, no motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-235, WEX My Deal Participation Agreement. Move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, no motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-236, Business Associate Agreement with Sharpbyte Software Design LLC. Move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters during discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, no motion carries.
Resolution number 2025-237, Buildings and Grounds Type is Clerk III, Paired at a one-year rate. Move that resolution.
Support.
Motion has been made supporters during discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing, no motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that is all.
Thank you, Commissioner Begic. Report for the county officials, Mr. Barsch.
Yeah, thank you. Just a brief comment, as I made some comments previously, but I wanted about the budget. But I want to thank the board of commissioners for your engagement in the process and budget hearings. Everybody brings something to the table, and I think we've crafted a very sustainable and smart budget for Bay County for 2026. Also, want to thank Scott, Horace Tripkowski, Tim Presnitz, and the team in the Finance Department, as well as, the chairman's already mentioned, Tiffany and Amber for their involvement in crafting what we think will be a good distribution of our resources to provide the best services we can for Bay County residents. Also, I want to compliment Matt Beaver, and I know we kind of breezed through it, but the cooperation that we're going to have in terms of a program for veterinary medicine for our Bay County Animal Shelter is going to be a great program. MSU veterinary students will be assisting our shelter with spaying, neutering, and other medical services for the animals housed out there. It's going to be a very good financial boost to our efforts at the shelter. And I guess with that, I know it's been kind of a long meeting, and we have a lot of people in the audience. I thought more people would be speaking tonight, but it's great to see this kind of interest in our work. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's about it. Oh, one last point. The team was sort of out at the Art Van Building today, and I want to compliment Serenus Johnson of Bay County for the work that they're undertaking out there, and they're really going gangbusters. The rooms are all, the offices are all being, coming together with the, you know, basically the construction that's going forward. And we think, you know, we don't want to be too optimistic, but I believe Rex Ellis said maybe a March opening. So we still got other situations to get through, and hopefully we'll continue the progress out there, and it looks good. It's coming along.
Thank you, Mr. Barsch. I'd like to invite Weston Prince up here for an update.
Yeah, so as I said, my name is Weston Prince, Bay County Treasurer. We completed our food drive over the last two, two and a half weeks. We collected a little over 1,500 cans of food. We think, this is a guesstimation, but we think we're looking at 1,300 pounds of food that we donated. So I want to thank all of our employees. I want to thank Executive Barsch for allowing me to use his staff in different spaces throughout the county to collect those funds and the food. Additionally, we collected about $80 in cash that we took over the community foundation today. That does not include the funds that were donated directly to the community foundation. I do not know what that number looks like. I'm sure Shawna can help us out on that one if the board wants. But again, thank you. You know, that's a pretty sizable dent. So, thank you.
Thank you, Wes. Commissioners' comments. Can any commissioners got any comments at this time?
I did.
Yes.
I missed it during the budget discussion. I just wanted to acknowledge that our fiscal 2026, Building and Grounds budget does not fully cover the department's anticipated project needs, and I want to affirm our commitment to supporting those necessary projects as formal requests come up. So, you know, we did say no to some things, but, you know, I think we'll be looking, be glad to look at things as they come up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Okay, unfinished business, is there any? Is there any new business? This time it's for public input. He's only wanting to address his commission. Please come forward. Dress your name, address. Going once.
Good evening. Dennis Panajak, 61714th Street. Just want to say I appreciate your vote of confidence in me for the building authority. And in the hopes of transparency here, I want everybody to know I'm not related to him.
And I have to agree with that.
Same last name.
Yes. One very important point I wanted to make, and that is, we lost over the weekend Mike Paulstead, who served, I think, for about 20 years as a county commissioner, contributed a lot. And then after his retirement, he was a Bay City firefighter and Bay County Commissioner. He oversaw the animal shelter in a part-time capacity during the time. And when we went to full-time, he didn't quite want to, you know, be working 40 hours a week, so he stepped down and Craig Dele took over. And then when Craig went to sixth, we got Matt. Everybody's done a great job, but also Mike was critical in that, in those first years in terms of going to, transforming to a no-kill shelter. So the kill rate had been very high out there, and so we're very proud of the track record of saving about 97, 98% of the pets that are collected by the shelter, whether they're dropped off or whether they're strays, but with transfers to other shelters and adoptions. We've maintained a very high level of adoption and saving the animals by finding new homes for them. But Mike, he will be missed, and I thought we ought to acknowledge his contributions as a commissioner, and maybe at some point we can do something for his wife, Ida.
Most definitely, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Going twice, public is closed at this time. Is there any miscellaneous announcements? We have some appointments in December. Department of Aging Advisory Committee, four two-year terms, expiring Districts 1, 3, 5, and 7, and Bay County Veterans Affairs Committee, two four-year terms. There's Bomb Begic and Troy Stewart. Amber, is there a need for closed session?
There is, Mr. Chair. I would request that the board move to go into closed session pursuant to NCL 15.26818 to discuss the written legal opinion of our attorney, Kevin Kilby, regarding the Monitor DDA Revenue Sharing Agreement. Needed to participate in this closed session is our attorney, Kevin Kilby, Corporation